to Order. Would you please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask if you have any cell phones, pagers, beepers, electronic devices, things of that nature. If you would kindly put them on silent, vibrate, shut them off, I would, the committee would greatly appreciate it. Just like to let you know that this meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee is being accessed live, the public is able to access this meeting live via livestream at youtube.com backslash DHS TV Media. It is also being, will be rebroadcast on DCTV Channel 9 on Wednesday and Thursday at 5:00 PM, Friday at 6:00 AM, Saturday at 8:00 AM, and Sunday at 2:00 PM, and then also on DC Channel 18 on Monday and Saturday at 12:00 noon and Thursday at 3:00 o'clock, and other times that they're able to squeeze us in. And we appreciate all the media that they give us. Roll call, please, Ms. Conther.
John Noons.
Yep.
Mary Waite.
Here.
Kathleen Amaral.
Here.
Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Okay, at this point in time, we have allocated 10 minutes for public comment, for anything that is on the agenda tonight. And I stress "on the agenda." At this point in time, I'll invite you up, anybody up to the podium, please state your name and address.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Ray Oswald, and I've, on May 10th, or rather, May 4th, at 10:00, 11:00 approximately AM, I had a discussion with Jonathan Galishaw. And to re-quote Steve Kerr, "When are we going to do something about it?" I am a consultant for a company called SkyPath, and we offer a technology that can lock down a school building remotely in seconds. And it can be offered free to the school, and it can be offered to, offer the school and any buildings within the school district a 25% savings on their liability insurance. We have been, they have been in existence since 2019. Alexa's law down in Florida was passed for all public school buildings to be mandated by a date certain to have the technology that we offer. The technology is patented. It was copied and pasted from a construction management software, and it is a technology that I think every public building should have, and especially every school should have. It is personal to me. I've been in a lockdown. You never want to be in that position, as a teacher or a kid. I have a niece in this school. In 1992, I had a long-term subposition, and I was across the hall from when Jason Robinson gets stabbed. I was out that day, but I know who was involved. It shouldn't happen. If we'd had this discussion on April 4th, I am going to tell you there are some high, very high-level discussions going on right now between our CEO and the state of Texas. Dartmouth can step up and be the first one on the South Coast. I came through Dartmouth Public Schools. Everyone in my family came through Dartmouth Public Schools. It's time the schools in the state stepped up and did something about it. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any for me. From the standpoint of a union, we operate on Bluetooth. Every teacher would get an identification tag, and when they leave the building, they are no longer identified as to where they are in the building. Instantly, an app fires on the teacher's phone. They can take an instant inventory of every kid in their, in their classroom with a number and a security code. And the technology fires to first responders instantly, administration instantly. If there's a 911 call, somebody was hurt, or, God forbid, you had an incident like Texas. That's all the time I'll take if nobody has questions.
What was the name of the company again?
SkyPath.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Lynn Turner here. I'm here to talk about the DEI topic. I don't know what you're going to be discussing about DEI, but I'm guessing it's about the committee and setting up the committee. If so, I would just ask that you please consider having various viewpoints on that committee, so it doesn't look like it's cherry-picked to be a far-left-leaning agenda that's just being thrust upon all of the schoolchildren. So you might have, you know, some with Republican orientation, independent orientation, and Democrat orientation. I ask you to consider that when you form your committee. Thank you.
If I may reclose, Jonathan was kind enough to set up some dates, where he said he was going to meet with our people down in Warwick. Our main office is in Warwick. We're happy to do a full presentation. I'm re-offering that. Let's take the lead in this town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Anyone else? Okay. Okay, now, student rep, Nanya?
Hi, everyone. To start off, last week was senior week at DHS, with events such as the Senior Stroll, Scholarship and Awards Evening, the prom, after prom, and the Senior Sunset. This week culminated with the 150th graduating class. The class of 2022 is truly exceptional, with graduates set to head off to some of the best colleges in the country, including Brown University, Emory, UCLA, and the Naval Academy. The spring athletics season is wrapping up, with several teams having qualified for the tournament play. Spring teams qualifying for the tournament include the girls' and boys' tennis teams, the baseball and softball teams, as well as the girls' lacrosse teams. The junior class will host the Junior Banquet at White's at Westport on Friday evening. We are looking forward to a fun night with the class of 2023. Freshmen will take the Biology MCAS tomorrow and Wednesday. An infrastructure test was conducted last week to identify any bugs or glitches, and the freshmen are ready to go tomorrow. We wish them the best of luck on their exams. Also, this is my last meeting as your student representative, as the school year comes to an end, and I just wanted to say, it's been such an honor and such a fun experience getting to be a part of these meetings, and this is something I really hope to be a part of next year, and it's been really great getting to meet you all, and thank you guys so much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Any questions for?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentations.
Thank you for being here. Good luck with your final exams. Enjoy your summer and be safe.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll see you in the fall. Or as the happening say, see you in September.
Good job, Mrs. Oliver.
Good job.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Next on our agenda is the approval of the regular session and executive session minutes of May 23rd. We'll take the regular session first. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Oliver, second by Ms. Waite. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Dr. Jenkins?
I'll abstain.
Dr. Jenkins will abstain. Hope you're feeling better. I know you were ill at the last meeting, so.
Thank you.
Hope you're feeling better.
I am, thank you.
Glad to hear that. Okay, the executive session minutes of the same date.
I'll try it.
You go ahead.
We'll fill it in.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Noons. So moved with the requirement that they be, oh, help me, John.
With the stipulations that be held until the matter for which they were intended is complete.
Exactly. So well said. Thank you. So that, so moved.
Second.
Got a second? Kathleen, Ms. Amaral.
Ms. Amaral did.
On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Abstention.
What abstention?
One abstention. My fault. 401. My fault. All right. Next on the agenda, you want to introduce Jonathan or I?
Yeah.
You're right ahead.
Where'd he go?
Where'd he go?
Well, I think he ran. So we have Chief Technology Officer Jonathan Galishaw, as we call him JG in the district, and provide an overview of what's been happening in technology this year.
If I may begin by addressing a couple of items that just came up. Mr. Oswald, I talked to him. He is a, he represents a company that has some security ideas. I said I'd be happy to hear his products. I also explained to him some of the security updates we've done over the years, which I'll share to you, with you tonight. So I will be talking to him over the summer, as well as probably other companies, too, because I know that's, you know, always reviewing what we've dedicated a lot of time and effort into is important to always keep. And, and also, our student representative mentioned the, the infrastructure test we had last week. She was kind enough to mention we did have technical issues, which was great to have the infrastructure test. It's a trial. It's a dress rehearsal for the test that's coming tomorrow. So it's always great to do that, and I appreciate the schools that put that together. So, welcome. This is the technology update, the state of technology for the department, the, the Dartmouth Public Schools. So what have you been up to lately? What have you been up to? Let me take you back. The date is December, March 12th, 2020. I'm pondering, I'm thinking, okay, we should have about 10% of our teachers on Google Classroom and the kids. We should be there. And maybe within three to five years, we'll have a one-to-one program for our Chromebooks. And I also read about this company called Zoom. I'm not sure what they do, but, and then the next day hit, as you remember. The pandemic, I know it's done so much to all of our, our lives. It, it affected technology in a different way. It was the, the boom of technology. It hit like a hurricane. Yes, that's me and my family on the causeway down in, we were, there's a picture of us. We made the, the newspaper. And a quick technology story, the, the gentleman took the picture. It was a local paper that they took it for. But it was so representative of neglect of family that it was picked up by the Associated Press and went all around the world, and our phone was ringing all the next morning. I was afraid that Child Services would call. It really is not as bad as it looks. I'm that immovable object there, and that's my family surrounded around me. But that's a gratuitous picture there. So the pandemic changed everything, and it made an explosion for technology here in the schools. With the help of Ms. Kylie, a lot of funding, a lot of grant funding, ESER funding, we're able to get quickly into one-to-one mode. And with the help of the instructional technologists we'll not just speak of in a minute, we were able to get our teachers online and teaching as best we can for the past two years. I wanted to express how technology is represented here at Dartmouth and educational technology in general, and it's a vision of a clear division. There are two elements of technology. One is the operational side of technology, the nuts and bolts, the physical hardware and such. And the other one, which has always been there, but really up and coming, and the age of instructional technology is upon us and will be the future of technology. And that's the digital standards for the children that use it, the classroom use of technology, as well as digital citizenship for the kids. What kind of digital footprint will I leave on the internet that I will have to answer for in the years ahead of my life, as well as the information they give? It's very important to educate them, help them, guide them through that process. First, the operational side. This is what we do with computers and hardware. We, we acquired a grant this year of about a half a million dollars to, to buy more Chromebooks. Thank you, federal government. We also doing some updates to our servers and our, the structure we have here, as well as through ESER funds. We acquired about 180 electronic whiteboards, the very clear boards that you see around you here and over there as well, all around the classrooms in the school, in all the schools. We also maintained our network and Wi-Fi. We made changes to filtering and blocking of information, bad stuff. We are looking in the horizon to do updates to those using E-Rate grant funds in the future, possibly in FY '26 or '27. So I'll be working with Mr. Kylie, getting on the capital improvement budget to look to the future. We've created a software library, so we know what software we can use and which software is safe to use that doesn't share our information. I'll talk about that later. And also, security and safety, as Mr. Oswald has passionate about, and we are as well. Changes to cameras. We have about 320 cameras around the district, adding about 20 more in key areas around the district. Those have about a 90-day retention, so they're able to hold on to information for about 90 days. We're able to export information in case we need it. Also, we have an intercom system and a good phone system, and also walkie-talkie system that works throughout the town. What's exciting about those features, too, is they work in conjunction with the police department. So we made, we connected through the fiber that's in town, the, the old fiber that we've used, the INET, as it's called. We've connected the intercoms as well as the cameras, so the police department can have eyes on the schools and also take over intercom systems or communicate with classrooms through that system. So, the same thing. And as always, we will do tests and updates this summer and look at where we can improve efficiencies and, and also more practice for the police department working with that. But the police department's been great working with us and doing that. The people that run that operations department are Mr. Branco, Chris Branco, who does servers, mobile device management, accounts, integration assistance, and backups. And backups are key to, you know, we all hear about ransomware and such. Backups are really your best defense against viruses and ransomware, because it keeps, we keep incremental backups, so if a virus were to hit, we could go back to a certain time in history and find files from that time. So backups are critical when doing that. Our networks and security and phones are handled by Mr. Jesse Martin, a Dartmouth resident, who is, is amazing about networking and what he knows about the networking, as well as filtering and also kind of closing the back doors and side doors of networks to make sure they're safe. We have our data person, Tom Faraz. He does Aspen. He also does Chrome Management and all data that interacts with the software that we have. Pam King, we stole her, I mean, we acquired her from the high school here, is, she's absolutely amazing. I, Pam is just, is, I, I almost described her once as a workhorse, but I thought that was a little bit derogatory, so she's a unicorn. She's a work unicorn, because she's amazing, and she just, it's unbelievable how, how efficient she is, how organized she is, and how smart she is. Tracy Bourgeois runs the office, does work orders, accounts, so little, pretty much the contact to the, to the public. And a person we acquired this year through ESER funds, Trish Leary, who was working on a special assignment this year in software safety and digital standards, someone I will talk about. She has a crossover responsibilities. I'll talk about her in a second when I get to integration. So in regards to instructional technology, that's where we have the teachers in the schools, the instructional technology specialists. Just to let you know who they are, we have at the high school here, Jennifer Thomas. At the middle school, Temple Mitchell. At Cushman and Demel, Liz Vossi. At Potter, Sandra Chica. And at Quinn, Kate Powers. These are the people that got us through the pandemic when it came to helping our teachers. Many other districts were not as fortunate. They said good luck to their teachers. Our teachers guided, trained, came up with, with quick training classes and constant helping the teachers, and it's great. They've come out of the pandemic busier than ever, because the teachers who've got a taste of that technology during the pandemic want to use that technology to be more efficient in their classroom and get, use those tools. As I mentioned, Trish Leary, that additional instructional technology specialist, we've been dealing with something, three-pronged approach this year for an area of technology integration that'll be invaluable. What changed after the pandemic with an, where everything was pretty much anything we had to do to get through that pandemic, a lot of companies that are on the other side are concerned about privacy and, and protection of data. So Trish has been working all year at vetting all of our software, both the free and the apps and the websites and so on, to find out which sites and companies are using, how they're using our data, if they're using our data, and they're having them sign agreements through a company called the Data Privacy Alliance. So these companies are working with schools to say that we're going to protect your data and not give it out to advertisers or vendors for profit. She's also working on digital standards with the instructional technology specialists. Every grade level, every discipline, we have standards for technology across the board, and we're implementing those. And a big one for students and for teachers, really, safety and security in the form of digital citizenship. Again, that, what that is, what do you do on the internet? These students we have, have access to technology at home. They have access to their personal cell phones, their personal computers. We are, have to train them on how to act and use and process information. The librarians are, are part of it. The tech teachers, of course, are part of it. The whole technology is dedicated to this. I think it's the most important piece of technology that we have. So as we've come out of this, we regroup, we reassess, and we react. We have the need. We know we're doing the need. We have the desire. These teachers, all, all of our teachers are pushing the edge of the envelope in regards to use of technology. As I've mentioned before, there was a teacher here that took parts of technology that she's using in her classroom, and she says, and I don't want to embarrass her, Ms. Church, she said, "It's changed the way I, I teach, and I'll never go back the other way." And I thought that was the biggest testament to technology. If it can make a more efficient way of doing something, it, its goal has been reached. We have the technology. Thanks to the grant funding that we've acquired through Ms. Kylie and other sources, we have the technology, and we have the ability. These tech teachers are teaching how to use this. Working on technology, as I've always said, is like trying to build a plane in flight, especially during the school year. We, that's why we love the summer. The summer's great, because you all go away, and we, we remain to get some work done. I, I tease, I tease, but you know what I'm saying. But it's exciting, because we get so much done, and, and so, and so we have a list of things so long to do. And they, you know, they include update of wiring, more efficient wiring, update of a website, increasing server capacity, cleaning of Chromebooks, and kind of organizing and processing those. Again, looking, continuing the vetting of software. And my number-one priority, which is something that I'll be working on, oh, I'm almost done. I just wanted to, I'm just, I'm talking fast, because I know that I don't want to, I'm nervous, and I don't want this to go on too long. As we usher in the new era of technology, my priorities are policies, procedures, and protection. As I mentioned about digital citizenship, I think we have a renewed commitment to protect the students from the internet, the information on the internet, how to process it properly. Policies and procedures will enforce those or guide those. And that's really where I'll spend my summer, working on some of those things, like updating plans or acceptable use policies or things like that. And the rewriting of those policies, and those procedures to make it more efficient, how to place work orders if something's broken, how to acquire new technology, show us where the needs are. And that's it. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions?
Should I go first?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Galishaw, for your presentation and for, you know, for all you've done for the past two to three years during COVID. It certainly has been a very difficult time. Yeah, I would certainly agree with you in your statement up front, where you said, you know, you were kind of half joking, where you said, you know, and maybe in two to three years, we'd have a one-to-one program. And who would have thought it would happen within a couple of months?
Yeah.
Over the summer. So, no, I, I think that's great. I think everything, you know, that your, your department does, it's very well thought out. It's constantly a moving target, certainly in the air while you're building it, for sure. As far as, obviously, security, we heard a little bit about security this evening. And I know that in the past, you know, we, we've certainly talked about it. And I know you've worked with Mr. Kylie, has done a tremendous job with our security cameras, access control, and everything else that goes along with it, as well as interoperability. I think the interoperability with all the departments, without saying too much, I think is a huge piece, right? Do you, do you think, in your opinion, that there, there is some more room to, to improve on that?
Yeah.
Or do you think that we're, you know, we're, we're at an okay level and we can stay status quo?
Well, I think the improvements come for, we have security, as I mentioned, 320 cameras. What I, what I'm doing this summer is literally walking from end to end of every building to make sure there's no crevice that's on, on, you know, without coverage, if you will. The other thing that helps a lot, too, is the changing of cameras. We maintain the existing cameras for cost efficiency. But as cameras come down in prices and, and quality comes up, we're able to replace analog cameras with digital that are so clear, that allow you to get license plate numbers and, and faraway information. I think the other thing we can always improve upon, meeting with the, the police department, getting on a testing schedule of trying the intercoms as well as seeing them, because we gave them that ability, and they're using it. They know how to do it. But I want to feel comfortable that they're very proficient in it, because I think that's how we can always improve. Going through with principals to walk through buildings to make sure the coverage is what they need. There are some dead spots on the, in the perimeter. It's just a matter of taking the time, and we have 20 cameras that are planned for, for additions. So, but we will be part of the review that we're looking at for, for other avenues. But as you mentioned, Mr. Kylie and Mr. Ferreira, over the years, the mantraps.
Yep.
The walkie-talkie system, the swipe badges, the security doors are amazing improvements.
No, I, I think that's all great. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, it, it takes an incident like something like happened in Uvalde in order for us to really, our ears to perk up. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, you know, the mantraps with the double doors was a direct result of Sandy Hook. It happened shortly, those happened shortly after.
Right.
So I, I agree with staying ahead of the curve. You know, we owe it to our, to our students. We owe it to our, our faculty. But, you know, at the end of the day, all the technology in the world is not going to, you know, help if someone leaves the door propped open or, you know, through, through human error. So there's, there's a lot to be done, and, you know, maybe at another meeting, we can talk about that. But as far as going back to technology, I, I say this every year, and I'm going to, I'll say it again this year, I think for, for the amount of responsibility that your department has and that you're, you know, you're tasked with, with working on, I think it's, it's safe to say that you could easily use someone else. And I would, I said it last year, I think it was cut right as we. And I would, I said it last year, I think it was cut right as we were talking about this as COVID hit, it was in the budget and then COVID hit and get cut out of the budget. I am, I'd like to see this put into the budget again, maybe next year for an additional piece because when you look at, when you look at the private sector, when you look at healthcare, education is substantially understaffed when it comes to technology.
No, I appreciate that you, and you know the business, so you understand. I really appreciate the Esr funding and the Dr. Gifford allowing for Ms. Leary, which alleviates some of that pressure, allowing for shifting of responsibility. And it also helps a lot to hire the right people. The department's dedicated, dedicated to a fault. Don't tell them that, but no, they are, they truly are. I mean, anyone that's dealt with them knows, they'll go to the ends of the.
I hear nothing but positives.
Yeah, they're just really positive, nice people. And yeah, but I appreciate you.
I have two quick questions. One is Trish Leary, is that, that was Esr funded? Is that position going away and she'll be back to her regular duties next year for FY '23?
No, that one.
No, we decided as a team, Kate Powers, who was the Quinn, started out as a librarian, took over in the school, part librarian but part of the ITS. So Jonathan kept advocating for us to keep it another year because of the work that's kind of half done and the product that's being developed. So we decided we're going to keep it one more year at least. And as he said, it takes some of the burden off the tech department itself, but also just watching the work that's going on with the ITS teachers. And then they bring that into the classroom. We just hate it to.
The creation of the standards, the creation of the digital citizenship. The implementation is coming now. We're on the brink.
Right. It's a brink.
So I would, I would do my all call to just Dr. Gifford at four in the morning and say, "This is a message from Mr. Galishaw. I really need Ms. Leary." And apparently after four or five of them, she gave it.
Okay.
So that's good.
Excellent. Well, last question is for redundancy purposes. Do we currently just simply have one ISP for the entire district? Or do we have a secondary fiber backup? Because as we all know, when the internet goes down, we can't, nothing can be accomplished.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that. It sounds like you have my playbook, Mr. New, I mean, Mr. Oliver. Sorry, no, but yes, we reexamining that, Mr. Oliver, in regards to doing, we have a single point that comes out of here.
Right, correct.
And we're looking at the fiber that goes through town as well as a different route out. We do have one route out that comes out of Bush Street, but it's a smaller cable modem. Fiber's becoming cheaper, I also can E-rate it. So I'm looking to do a fail-safe going either direction. So that's part of the rebuild, I mean, the redesign of the network, which will probably come in the next two or three years.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Galishaw. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you. I'm going to try to talk to my microphone and not look at you because I know Mr. Parati will be yelling in your ear if I lean away from the microphone. I was hearing it when Mr. Oliver was like, lean forward. I want to say, I think, you know, you're popular with half of the house, the parents who, and unpopular with the other half, the kids who have the Chromebook, who can't do things, which is great, right? They're frustrated. They want to do more stuff, but the stuff is not always good. And I want to tie that into our conversation about security because I think we've done a good job with physical security. But I think in a certain sense, right, there's, we always need to be doing the best we can and looking for more. But at the same point in time, that concept of digital citizenship and misinformation and learning and for kids, when they see something, to say something online, there are almost always in these situations signs that are missed. And so I think as we talk about this and technology, we need to think about where our best investment is. Is it a more hardening of our schools or is it in the training and the, I don't want to say monitoring, right? Because so much of kids' digital life is outside of school. But in nearly all of these cases, there are some signs. There's something going on in their digital life that are signs of this for so many of these kids. And so I think we need to think about, we need to be constantly thinking about what we're doing. But in terms of the technology, it's that balance because mantraps are easy to see and they're good, I'm not saying they're bad, but they're easy to see and they're easy to point to. It's much harder to say we've invested in this education program that teaches kids about misinformation, so hopefully they don't get dragged into this, or teaching them about when to say something to their teacher or their. And so I think we as a committee and working with you have to really think about, right, and the administration, where we invest our money in these sorts of things. Because what we like to do is to prevent these things before we even need to go to the hardening of schools. And so I want us to keep that in mind and that's why I appreciate your priorities, talking about that at the end. It's talking to kids and teaching and thinking about that, about what we do. And so I appreciate that very much. And, you know, I think we all look forward to, you know, talking with you and learning more and working in this to make sure we keep our kids safe.
And just to speak on that too, that's why the definition of the clear division between operational technology and, for 25 years of my career, operational was the most important thing. The Wi-Fi is too slow, I can't print. It's all the tangible things of technology. But the intangibles are the most important and the age of the ITS is upon us. And that is the truly understanding, knowledge, we have to go deeper. And it's all, you know, out there. It's not, it's not hard, it's not as easy as a broken printer. It's a lot more difficult.
That's it for me.
Yeah, I just quickly, my two colleagues sort of covered some of my, I was wondering, Trish's position, I was wondering the future of that in terms of, you know, sustainability, but that's really great. And I was looking at my colleague when you were talking fiber, this and that. And I think John had the same sort of dazed look that I had.
Yeah, I have it too. I have it too, yeah.
Yeah, I just really appreciate you bringing this to us and just having, you know, lived through what your team, under your leadership and the district's priority of it through the last couple of years, phenomenal.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, so, you know, to echo my colleagues', yes, thank you. I mean, the tremendous amount of work, I mean, just the last few years, it's, you know, it's volumes and volumes of time, so we really appreciate that. I had a couple of questions. Mr. Oswald alluded to the fact that it sounds like you are also going, planning to meet with him.
Absolutely, yeah.
So just because I, you know, again, it was a very quick presentation and to Mr. Oliver's point, like, you know, that's something that we certainly need to follow up. When he spoke about like kind of a digital lockdown of the school, was he talking about internal doors as well? When he talked about that, like a lockdown on the schools, like if there was a digital, would that lock down individual classroom doors? I'm just kind of concerned about, I know we have problematic doors within the buildings that open internally versus externally. So I'm kind of curious like how, you know, when we have these antique, well, I want to say antique buildings, but kind of, I mean, when we think about like Cushman and Demille's problematic buildings, how updating technology works with the physical structure and how that would be part of the conversation you're going to have with Mr. Oswald? If that or similar.
Yeah, for Mr. Oswald's sake, he had called, mentioning about his product. And I said, "Yeah, I'd love to," because anything that I can acquire to gain more knowledge and it's kind of closer to my home in Secoak to go to Warwick. It's just, I said, "I'll go to Warwick." So, but I'm curious. I mean, but it's not just his product.
Well, no, exactly. I mean, that was just like as a thought.
So in regards to digital lockdown, yeah, it's looking at all of it because it is one of those concerns that, you know, and Mr. Nunes gave me an example of a friend that had a General Ledger, a computer, and he had a General Ledger book. And when his computer died, he lost his General Ledger information and his General Ledger paper lived on for legend. But it is concerning because we do depend so much on technology. And as Mr. Oliver's point of having redundant systems, whether it be fiber, because we become, when we have a blip in the internet, it's as if the world ended. From cell phones to, and I totally understand. So to have a 99% uptime with technology is what you're looking for. And that includes the security. You don't want security to, what will security do if power goes out?
Right.
Will doors unlock? Will doors not be able to get out? Both are concerning from whatever. So I think it's adding that to the review as well.
Okay, absolutely. And then my second question is, I know that we had talked just briefly over time and I know Mr. Tebow was looking into the, you know, something that is a digital pass system. Is that something that, because again, I know there's been a lot going on at the end of this year. And so I'm curious, how would that impact like your department in like implementing something like that that would, you know, be a digital pass system that would go in, you know, for the students? Because again, and of course, that's another reason why we need to make sure our fiber is updated and everything else is so that we have those backups if we are depending on a virtual like ePass. It sounds like something like that would be.
As I mentioned to the principals and I'll reiterate, always when we have our admin retreat in the summertime, I like to preach technology first because, only because it may, I may have to be called in to get it to be compatible with the system. So I'm not there to be red tape or slow the process. I more want to make sure it's compatible. So yeah, with Mr. Tebow's thought there, it's amazing that you talk about the digital pass. I want to shout out to during the pandemic, I don't know if you noticed, but the people here, the ITS and the other tech, made a barcode on the tables.
I know.
And they used their, kids used their phones. I had nothing to do with that, okay? This is, this is, this is the rock stars that we hire. And for close contact. So if I, it automatically went to a Google Sheet so we could see that I was sitting next to Mr. Oliver, sitting next to him, so that when you had to do close contact, we had it. It was all homegrown. It was amazing. So, but to your point, yes, I will check with Mr. Tebow and make sure any of those systems are compatible. As I talked to Mr. Kylie, when we have the maintenance department, they work in conjunction with my network person, Jesse, all the time. They're really close.
Okay, well, thank you very much for everything you do.
My turn, okay. A couple of simple questions. You talked about having 180 of those electronic whiteboards.
Correct, yeah.
Are they system-wide? Are they all here in the high school or are they all system-wide?
No, they're spread out throughout. What we did was we make a, when we had some Esr funding, we made a pass. And then we had, the ITS's would regroup to make sure where there might be holes. And this last press covers the elementary schools completely and a good amount of the high school and middle school. But more, we need more for them, but we will as needed. In the high school, it's kind of a divide and conquer model. I look at the departments and see how, what could better utilize the boards. We've done those boards upstairs in the language department. The, these large television screens are what the English department uses. The short throw annotated right on the whiteboard is what the math department uses. The labs downstairs have their own projection system with the labs they have, so they don't use those boards as much. So I found it easier to do a divide and conquer model because funding sometimes would come in smaller pockets as opposed to doing a large capital improvement. I could probably, one thing I will be working on in the year to come is a capital improvement to, now that all the Chromebooks are in place and all the machines are in place through these, now we can get, do a cost cycle replacement as we project out for the next 10 years. So that'll be exciting, not for Mr. Kylie, but it would be exciting for me to at least put my sights on those for improvement.
Okay, and.
I can give you numbers, Mr. Nunes, about who got, who has what, but they're mostly in every classroom at the elementary school.
Okay, that's good, thank you. You were talking about, you know, ushering a new era of technology, what are our priorities and policies and such. And it almost sounds like you're trying, what you're trying to do, and which is really great, is to protect the students from themselves, from going off wherever they shouldn't be.
We could lock down their Chromebooks, both here and at home, but I can't lock down their personal computer or their cell phone. And I would imagine most children, students in the high school have a cell phone. I mean, am I naive to think they don't? Or maybe even the middle school kids. But they can go anywhere on their cell, on their cell phones. We have to educate them on what that means. Because the digital footprint, what they're projecting, will make it difficult to run for office in 25 years because they're leaving a trace of what they do.
That's it. And my last comment is just a general one is, it's obvious that what goes on in technology now is just not working on a computer or the computer doesn't work, the printer's not working. That is more to it than just, you know, the computer and the printer type of deal in the software.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for a wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jonathan. All right. Next.
No change.
Yeah, okay. Next we have, on our consent agenda is a request from SMEC, the Southeast and Mass Educational Collaborative, to request permission to lease a classroom space. You have the paperwork in front of you. It's the high school, the Quinn School. There's no change from previous years to 3% increase. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to confirm, while we're at the SMEC, the classroom that's being leased here at the high school for their program, the classrooms that are leased at the Quinn Elementary School, are those for our programs specifically? I actually, I was just with Mrs. Cooper, do we take in students from outside as well into those classrooms? Because I know it was, it was originally the classroom that we opened up and then we converted it, we turned it over to SMEC. So just to confirm that we are, it's accepting, they're taking, we're taking in our own students as well as outside students through SMEC.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the three SMEC classroom leases for FY '23.
Second.
By Mr. Oliver, second by Dr. Jenkins. On the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, here we go. All right, old business. Diversity Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. What do we want to do? This is something that goes back, no disrespect, just the way everything has been. This goes back to April, so. We're finally getting to it. And again, no biggie.
A year ago.
A year ago, yeah. Or before that, too, yeah.
So.
Dr. Jenkins?
I do want to continue the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. At the same point in time, I recognize that we have two new curriculum coordinators that will be starting in their roles in July 1. And I don't, I see them as sort of playing somewhat large role in this in part because I know the superintendent doesn't have room under my heat to do anything, but also because they're the ones who are coordinating across classrooms, across schools, and part of that conversation. And so I don't wonder whether we don't want to wait until they're on board and they can be here at a meeting with us, whether that be a working meeting or a regular meeting, but provide some input onto this. Because I think they, I think they are the people that should be sort of leading this. With, I mean, last time it was me, Chair. I'm not really sure that's the way it should be. I really feel like Ross and Katie should be maybe leading this as part of their work. I don't know if the superintendent would agree with this and that we are sort of partners on it and, you know, integrating other viewpoints and that sort of thing. So I would be okay with waiting for them to come on board and I don't necessarily want to keep kicking the can down the road, but on the other hand, we want to do it right.
No, no, totally understood. You know, I mean, and I think that was a comment that I made too with way back was the fact that especially once we approved their positions was, you know, they're going to be very much involved with however this is, wherever this leads us, type of deal. Miss Wade?
No, I agree with Dr. Jenkins. I think the, you know, just as we think through this, and again, this perhaps is a conversation for us to continue, like, once those folks are here, is again revisiting what is the mandate for this committee? Like, so again, certainly when it comes to curriculum, those are the folks who should be driving those conversations. I think if we're talking about facilities, you know, and access, those are, you know, certainly like conversations with Mr. Kylie and the rest of us. So, so again, I think it makes sense to delay it for those reasons because they'll be homing the curriculum piece and, which is, you know, certainly a huge chunk as, you know, we look at, you know, each of our grade levels, K through 12. But I do think that those other pieces, I think, you know, we need to, maybe once they're here, we can kind of reconsider our mandate and what we want to do.
Once they get in. That's fine, I'm good with, I mean, once they get in and they get their feet wet and see what's, what's going on, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll just hold on that until they, go ahead, Shannon.
I just want to make, you know, one other sort of comment about this. I literally don't care what political party identification anyone has. I am open to Republicans, Democrats, independents, or what. But you have to be committed to diversity, equity.
But you have to be committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion. That is a minimum qualification for being part of this committee. All right? You have to be committed to making sure all of our kids feel welcome and all of our kids are treated fairly and justly. After that, if you have a commitment to that, I don't care who you believe in, who you vote for, it doesn't matter to me. That's the fundamental. That's what this is about. It's about creating an environment for our kids to be successful and to thrive. And there has to be a fundamental commitment to that. Aside from that, I don't care.
Open-minded.
Yep. And I think that should be a, you know, qualifying piece as we, you know, it should be a conversation when we're, you know, speaking to people who want to be on the committee, that that should be a commitment that they have, that they're, they're open-minded, as you said, Mr. Noons.
They're, they're going to be, you know, they're going to answer the was because we're the ones, we're the ones that's going to appoint them.
Right.
So.
Thank you for that.
Once we get, we'll get down that road and then we'll get people on board.
Right. Agreed.
How's that, does that, that make sense?
Yep. Agreed. Sounds good.
I agree.
All right, cool. Very good. Thank you, everybody. Okay, next on under Old Business, SMEC quarterly report, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we had the, we had the opportunity to meet last week, the SMEC Executive Board. It's our second to last meeting of the year. It's the meeting in which we have the first reading of our budget. Budget is looking good based on expected revenues and expected expenditures. We're well within our means. You know, I will always say that, Chris, the business manager there, as well as Catherine, does a phenomenal job with their budget, always keeping us up to date on the finances and continuing to grow the program. We're looking at right now expanding the program by two classrooms, I believe. We're looking at a, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Noons, a speech or a language-based program. We're looking at adding two language-based classrooms because the need is there for it. And just please remember for everyone on the committee, that just a reminder that really, you know, member districts of SMEC, just like of Southeastern Collaborative, the members, it's, they're looking to us for their programs, right? What are the districts, the member districts need in order to succeed with the student population that they have? So there's always conversations with the member district special education directors, and that's where these, this new program is coming from. There's been a great need, I think especially due to the pandemic, for the language-based programs. So that is something that we're going to offer this year, and we're going to see how, see where that goes. In addition, for the past three years, SMEC has been, I think it's been at least three years, we have been working, or I shouldn't say we, but Mrs. Cooper and her assistant has been working diligently trying to find a property that would fit our needs to expand the program. Because right now SMEC owns a building down the north end of New Bedford in the Sastoquin area. That is a behavioral, I believe, behavioral classroom. We also have, I believe, a small building in Fairhaven, but our large campus is at the old King Lumber in South Dartmouth. And that is where most of our, you know, that is where the offices are and our adult day health programs take place. So we're really looking to grow the program, especially the behavioral medical, looking at medically fragile. So we tentatively, I don't want to say for sure, but we certainly have made an offer, the board has made an offer, to the Fall River Diocese for the, which is actually perfect, and I think this is a big deal because I'll share it with everyone. Right now, the facility in the north end of New Bedford abuts the now-closed, the parish.
Is it Our Lady of Lourdes?
Our Lady of Fatima Parish.
Our Lady of Fatima.
So it now, it abuts that partial. So that's made up of the rectory, it's made up of a significantly good-sized hall with classrooms in it for Sunday School as well as the church itself. SMEC has made an offer, we're waiting to hear back from the Fall River Diocese. It's been quite a road. We've also, we've tried to, you know, work with the Fairhaven Public Schools or the Town of Fairhaven with a property there. That fell through. We've also looked at a formerly now-closed charter school in New Bedford. So they're really trying to do the due diligence because there's certainly a need for it. And for the viewing public, you know, for those of the people watching at home, is that certainly a benefit to this community and to the school district to be able to have collaboratives to work with versus private placements. You know, a typical collaborative placement can be anywhere between $50,000 and, you know, $70,000 versus a private placement, which is significantly more. And it certainly fills the, fills the need. And, you know, SMEC as well as South Coast Collaborative, Cape Cod Collaborative, Reed's Collaborative in the area, they all do phenomenal, they all do a phenomenal job, you know, working with school districts. So I'm hopeful and I think that this is a great opportunity for, for the school system if we can, if SMEC can expand their program. So that's really all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Thanks for the update, Chris.
You're welcome.
Much appreciated. All right. Moving on to New Business, FY '22 Year End Authorizations, Mr. Kylie.
Thank you, Mr. Noons. So each year around this time, it's hard to believe we're, we're here already, having had a beautiful graduation ceremony and wrapping up the school year, we're also wrapping up our fiscal year. So at this time, what I ask the committee is the latitude to move funds from one functional area to another so that we can conclude our spending for the year and wrap it up. So during the school year, what we do is if, for instance, we needed money in textbooks or versus instructional supplies, we can authorize those transfers and we regularly do. That's within the instructional umbrella of, you know, of what we do. But when we need to move money, let's say from utilities to instruction, that is what I'm asking you for now, is the authorization to really, you know, move funds from, from one major area to another. So that'll help us move forward, wrap up the fiscal year. We're in pretty good shape. Definitely solvent, so that's a good thing.
That's true.
And we're, you know, we're approaching, you know, approaching the end and trying to get all our estimates together for our final, final expenses and try and, you know, expend our monies in the most thoughtful way possible. Usually if we did have any funds remaining at the end of the year, what we'd focus on is priorities that are part of our strategic plan, which generally would focus on technology, Mr. Galishaw, and instructional materials and other ways to enhance instruction are usually our focus for this time of year. So we hope, we're still in the sort of process of getting there, but, you know, we always hope to be able to support, support activities and that meet with our strategic plan, so.
Any questions? Okay. So the chair will entertain a motion to authorize the budget transfers as adopted by us on the file DBJ.
Still moved. Second.
Moved by Dr. Jenkins, who's second?
Ms. Hammer.
Catherine. On the motion, any discussion?
No.
One quick question, Mr. Kylie.
Mm-hmm.
And I just thought I should have asked you earlier, and I didn't think of it, I apologize. Have we heard anything from, I know a few, every once in a while we get some money from town hall because of solar credits and things of that nature. Have you heard anything on that?
Well, we, so we participate as part of the town, in part of the town's solar program. And usually it's one of the last things that we find out. Often we find it out after.
June 30th.
June 30th, which is always a juggling act because obviously we can't buy anything after June 30th. So traditionally, we're right down to the wire trying to figure it out, estimate based on prior years, and sometimes that's, can vary quite a bit. So that's always a juggling act right at the end.
No problem. Thank you, sir. All right, so chair hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Kylie. As with technology, it's been a little bit of a wild fiscal ride over the last two years. I can remember some of us having pits in our stomachs when the pandemic started about how we were going to weather this financially. So thank you for, for all that you've done, learning about supply chains, air filtration, all that, all that fun stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thinking about all the Chromebooks over the summer, right? Figuring out how to source and get those, right? That was, it's been, I'm sure you've learned a lot of interesting things, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, I have. It's been a juggling act, but I think we've done our best.
You've done a great job.
Thank you.
Been fine, it's been great. Thank you very much. Okay, next, under New Business, is a discussion of proposal made by the town to form a town-school committee, standing committee to honor local Native American history and culture. So I think I forwarded you an email that I got from Mr. Tattlebaum, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I apologize that I sent it, I think I sent it Friday only because of, you know, it sat in my inbox and I totally blew by it. So I apologize for, you know, the length of time it sat in my box. Dr. Jenkins?
So I'm totally in favor of this, and the only reason why I asked to, for us to discuss it was because I believe as in, you know, in transparency, fairness, that we need to put it before the public on our agenda so that if the public does have anything to say about it, they have that opportunity.
Yeah.
But I think this is a good idea and that's the only reason why I think I wanted for us to discuss it. So, yeah, I'm in favor of that.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just say, like, you know, if there's an opportunity, I would really like to serve on this committee. I've done a bit of work around it, so, you know.
We'll get there.
Yeah.
Dr. Gifford.
So we'll talk about our meeting?
Yep, go right ahead. Yep, we can.
So, I don't remember. Last week, Mr. Noons, Mr. Oliver, Mr. Ventura, and I met with chairwoman from the Aquina Tribe.
And Chris Barrera.
Oh, yes, that's right. We couldn't see him, so I.
No, we couldn't, yeah, so that.
Anyway, we had a very informational meeting that finally I learned about a lot of the things that I've been struggling with. We've talked about so many things, a town committee, a school working group, you know, all of these things, and really was stuck in a conundrum of how to proceed most appropriately and effectively. So what, again, the chairwoman is so knowledgeable on everything governmental about the tribe itself. So the way she described it to us was, was that her suggestion, and I think we agreed as we listened to everything, was since, and it really helped me understand that whole thing, as we talked a lot about federally recognized, et cetera, as a federally recognized tribe, they have the authority, if you will, to form a governmental body with another governmental body, meaning us. So what would happen is, in essence, is we would, we've already voted, Mr. Oliver had that vote the last time about engaging them in the discussion, et cetera. What basically what happened is we would then send a formal request to start this formal body. We would then come together and discuss about, with an MOA, an MOA would be put in place. And because they're federally recognized and it comes from the council, we would form the decision-making board of however we proceed with curriculum ideas, those kinds of things, whether it's plaques in schools, et cetera. So we would agree on a board, let's say, we kind of discussed the idea of nine members, which is kind of always a good, a good number. Four perhaps from the tribe itself, five or so from the school department or a community member, but people with expertise that then have the decision-making authority on anything we might want to vote on, whatever it might be. But throughout the process, as we meet with this formal decision-making body, the thing would be to invite other folks that have expertise, could it be from other tribes, from people that don't particularly live in Dartmouth, or just folks that have other expertise in various areas. Out of that might come, as we've talked about before, as I keep using plaques in school or events in school, let's just say, that we decide a day in particular, we're going to have people come in to discuss the culture or the artwork that, that the native tribes do, which she said she did a few years, a number of years ago, many years ago. Remember she mentioned that?
Yeah.
About having done that in the past. So that's what we took away from it. It was really informative. I finally had some clarity on a way to move forward with the school side, aside from, and again, you could have, since, again, Mr. Tattlebaum's been so enthusiastic about it, he could be one of the members if this group decided on our side what folks could be included. So that's kind of the essence. Mr. Oliver, Mr. Noons, you were there, if you have anything to add that I've missed, but that was generally what I took away from it.
I would agree, Dr. Gifford. Mr. Noons? Yeah, no, I found it very helpful as well. Obviously, to me, my takeaway was that the decision-making body from, from the town side would be members, you know, whether it's a school committee, school committee member, select board member, it can be anyone. But what Chairwoman Andrews, you know, specifically said, essentially this is an agreement from one government to another government. And however, that does not mean that other tribes cannot come during these meetings to present and have, and to share their views and their opinions. But at the end of the day, is the way I understood it was just simply as though it's one, it's an intergovernmental agreement from the Dartmouth schools to, to the Aquina Tribe. But no, I thought, I thought it was very, very informative.
Yeah, the government, the government education type of deal.
Yeah, so I have a couple of questions, I guess. So then, if that's the case, because, you know, if we have this agreement with Aquina, would we then be planning a separate meet committee that would meet with? I mean, this is where I think it becomes very problematic a little bit if we're saying that we have four formal members of the Aquina who would sit. Are we then inviting four formal members of the Mashpee? You know, so again, and that's where I'm really like.
Right. That's, that's exactly what she said, that the governmental relationship would be between us and them as an MOA.
Yep.
But folks would be invited as part of discussions, offering advice, offering resources, but we would vote to have a particular group that is the decision-making body.
But that would just be the limited, the decision-making body in that case would just be the Aquina as our?
If that's what we have an MOA, yes.
It does not have to be that way. I study governments, governmental relations for a living. I have a PhD in political science. We may form a multi-governmental alliance. It is done all the time, right? Interstate commerce, inter-town compacts, all of these things happen across sovereign governments. There is no reason we cannot structure a compact between the Mashpee, the Aquina, and the Town of Dartmouth. It is 100% possible. It is. It's 100% possible.
I would just simply, I would be open to, to your, what you're saying, Dr. Jenkins, you know, in the spirit of things, I don't have a problem with that. I would, honestly, I would defer to Chairwoman Andrews.
That's not, no disrespect, Shannon, that's not how I walked away from that meeting. With all due respect, that's not how I walked away from it. Hang on, okay? Don't, we'll have a decent conversation.
We will.
Okay.
I'm just going to note that there are very different opinions across the two tribes about education, relations, and all of that. And we must also, there is no historic claim of the Aquina to the Town of Dartmouth. We have two federally recognized tribes. If we're going to go with federal recognition, there is no reason why we should favor one tribe over the other.
It's them and Mashpee.
And I will also note that as, as a governing body, right, we get to vote on that.
The MOA, correct.
Correct. But we can direct you about what to do. So the decision about who to engage in with that with lies with us.
Okay. Kathleen?
No, I was just with the Mashpee and the Aquina. I did have a conversation with Chairperson Andrews and, and I. Chairperson Andrews, and I really appreciate Shannon's expertise in perhaps sort of coming to some consensus around the two federally recognized. But my understanding, when talking to her, I had a really nice conversation with her, was because at the time, we had a lot of stuff, right, going on in our community about this, and it was in the paper all the time, or whatever, that she was, she was very open to other, but I like what Shannon's saying in terms of the two federally recognized, but she was sort of saying, hey, you know, she wasn't, I don't want to say the right thing, very welcoming. The way I, I'll very sophomorically explain, is I understood it to be her talking about that federal recognition, aside from what Shannon's point is, sort of like, I work for a state organization myself, and we have small bodies that utilize our nonprofit status, say. So, I understood her to say, we will take the hit, come to the table. That's how I understood her when speaking to her one-to-one, like, not take the hit, that's a bad thing, but utilizing our federal status, but we're not, the table is set for everyone. That was sort of my understanding. But I would love to sort of see if we could combine that.
So, I also, I mean, I think we all have separately, it sounds like, had conversations with Ms. Andrews, and I did as well, you know, as well as Mr. Ventura several times, like, just to kind of go through this. And it sounds like, again, the federally recognized status is certainly critical, and that they were willing to have other people sit at the table who had and be voting members. This is my understanding from that conversation, if they also shared that status. Other people could come, this is, again, my impression, and we can discuss this, this doesn't, like, limit us. Other people could come and attend, but their request was if they are not, do not have that federally recognized status, and others, if they're outside of the Aquina or Mashpee recognizing our state, then they would not be voting members. This was like my understanding of their request. Now, again, how will we, like, sift through that? There also, my impression was, speaking to Mr. Ventura, is that they requested that we make those as we make an individual agreement, MOA, with the Aquina. We also make that separately ourselves, and they're not involved in any other separate agreement that we make with the Mashpee. But then those, then the town themselves, with Mr. Tattlebaum, would have to go out and make his own separate agreements with each of those bodies. So, that was my impression when I went through this. But I guess my question is, as I'm, like, understanding, are you suggesting now that we have one committee that we're running solely, and we're inviting Mr. Tattlebaum to serve on it? Or are we still sending, having that formal represent, that we're sending someone there as well as our own separate committee? I guess that's another thing I got muddled through in this conversation that we're having right now, like, because I get the impression from Mr. Tattlebaum that he, you know, that their plan is to have a town-wide committee, and then, again, we're dealing with a whole host of things, but understanding that the curriculum is our, when I say our, I mean the school's domain, and that would be separately hosted by ourselves in this separate committee that you seem to be alluding to. And again, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the measure of the conversation.
Yeah.
That's the way I would see it, because I couldn't make sense of it any other way.
Okay.
It was too big. It's too random. I've reached out to Mashpee, I mean, even, it's like, who do you call? What do you, it's, so trying to streamline it in this way was helpful for us to try to do some work. Whether the town then sets something up separately, or, as we talked about at that meeting, was, and I just used Mr. Tattlebaum because he's expressed a lot of enthusiasm about it, that our group says, from our school district, you know, let's just say we have the Director of Teaching and Learning, maybe a school committee person, maybe Mr. Tattlebaum, and maybe one, a teacher or something. I'm just, you know, throwing that out. She talked about their educational leader that they have in the tribe, and a couple of other folks. So, yeah, I think that's the only way we could make sense of it. So, whether the town then goes ahead and has us, and this group gets on board with that, it was just too big.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I don't know.
Yeah, where we go from here?
So-
Go ahead, Shannon.
I'd like to make a motion that any group that we form includes representatives from both of the federally recognized tribes in the state of Massachusetts, the Mashpee and the Aquina.
Okay. So, we've got a motion by Dr. Jenkins, a second by Ms. Waite, that any-
Any group that we form involves both of the-
I apologize. Any group that we form is going to have-
Federally recognized tribes.
Those two federally recognized tribes.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay. We have a second. Any discussion? Mr. Oliver?
I can certainly appreciate the collaborativeness, and we're trying to work together with both of them. It's been divisive enough, in my opinion, the whole process. You know, I want to be inclusive. I have no problem with that. Have we received, I actually, quite honestly, I like Mashpee's model, and what they do with their curriculum, and having appointee, I believe, on school committee. I certainly can appreciate everything that Mashpee does, you know. So, from that perspective, I think it's great. My question is, have they reached out to us and wanted to engage us in forming a partnership?
No. I reached out to the person that was given to me the name of the educational person from Mashpee, from the superintendent. I connected with her, and she was going to get back to me last week and did not. That's as far as I got so far, so.
So, here's my concern.
But she was another educational person, which, again, Cheryl mentioned about it, helping with that.
I'm okay with, to some extent, to Dr. Jenkins' motion, but what if they're not interested in forming a relationship with us, a partnership with us?
And if they're not interested, then they can send us a letter?
Yeah, and anyone voting affirmatively can vote to-
Or anything of that nature that says we're not interested, and we put it in the file, and we're good.
Yeah.
That's how I would, that's how I would take that. I mean, Dr. Jenkins' motion is valid, you know, we've gone out, we've reached out to the two of them. If only one wants to participate, so be it. That's all we can do. Dr. Jenkins?
So, my understanding of the rules of order is, if that so happens, anyone who would vote in the affirmatively has the chance to sort of reconsider that, right? So, like, if there's a yes and a no vote, and it passes, the people on the yes side can bring that motion back up, and we can change that vote.
Yes.
So, we can change that if that comes to pass.
Or we can just, or we can come back later on and make a motion and just either rescind that, or just say, all we're going to have is-
It's not something that we can undo.
We can undo it.
Yes. And I will also say that I have been in communication with some people from the Mashpee Tribe. I will follow up with them. I will follow up with my contacts on that, and I will do my best to get Dr. Gifford in touch with them.
The only thing I would just suggest also is, there's a difference between individual people from a tribe and the council.
The council.
That's one thing we learned. Remember she said, they have no-
I have contacts on the council and other people, official employees of the tribe.
Yeah.
Great.
Just make sure we don't have splits in a tribe.
So, the other thing, though, I don't know if you finished voting yet.
No, we haven't.
We have a motion on the day.
We're still discussing, so.
Just, I know you'll make the vote, but also then, I guess, the discussion on what to do with the town thing, you know, because we're talking kind of internal right now. So, anyway, I'm going to miss Tattlebaum's waiting for an answer.
Yeah, no. We'll put the ball in his court and let him-
Well, that could be.
We'll put the ball in, okay, timeout. All right. So, on Dr. Jenkins' motion, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Mr. Oliver. Passes four to one. That's fine. We'll move on with that. Now, with regards to what Mr. Tattlebaum is looking for, my, this is my two cents, for what it's worth, is to let him grab that ball, let them grab that ball and run with it.
Agreed.
Okay. And see where it goes, and we'll work at it from there.
We have enough right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. We've got plenty on our plate right now. Okay.
Okay.
Very good. All right. Okay. Next item of the new business is the proposed school committee meetings for July through September 2022. We have those, we have that that was given to us. We have June 27th, which was already on the calendar, anyway.
Yep.
And then we have Monday, July 25th, August, Monday, August 22nd. Those three meetings, if that's good for everybody, will start at 5:00. And again, only with the summer schedule. Kathleen?
I just want to say, I will try my best. I just, I don't have the summer off, and I have been working partly from home and from Waltham, so I will try my best, and if you will excuse me if I need to be excused, I just, I don't want to hold up the rest of-
Yeah, no problem. Shannon?
So, I'm going to be out of town the last two weeks in June, so that one, it doesn't matter when you hold it. Knock on wood. Covid test pending, right?
Safe travels.
I am not-
But the question now becomes, is when you get where you're going, the way the airlines are, can you come back?
Hopefully.
You know?
August 22nd, I can't commit. I have two kids starting college.
Yeah.
And I don't know their move-in days yet. I will do my best to work around that, but I'm just not 100% sure yet.
No problem.
They're all good for me. I think they're good for me.
They're all good for you? All right.
25th for me might be a problem, but it is what it is.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, it's-
Everybody's on, trying to do vacations.
Welcome to summer.
Yeah.
I got you. I hear you. All right. And then in, then to move back into September, we've got September 12th, which is, we normally get a chance to meet the new hires.
Yeah.
And Monday, September 26th. And both of those would start at 6:30, back to our usual time.
That's good.
Okay. All right. Perfect.
Yep.
That takes care of that. Next item. Dr. Gifford, your report?
Yeah, I don't have a lot tonight, obviously. It's the end of the year, and, you know, it's all about end-of-year activities. You all know what happened at the high school, so we do have middle school promotion next week, and all the other, fifth grade, this grade, everybody's doing something. But the curriculum summit's going to be kicked off as well, so a lot of folks have signed up for that, as we usually do right after the school ends. People, teachers, they really asked to do it this year, so I was glad to see that. And just the other thing, you know, we're just, schools are trying to fill vacancies that we have, and we did have principal interviews for the high school today, and we'll see how we're going to move forward with that. So, that's kind of it, just end-of-year wrap-up.
For me, a couple of things. I know Mr. Tevo kind of mentioned some of them yesterday, but just, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. 12 of our personnel are fortunate enough to be retiring over the next almost one year. Jean Flight from the high school, Sharon Guido from DeMello, Judy Cronin, the art teacher here at the high school, Patricia Kane, who's a business teacher and does decor and does a wonderful job with that. Rosa Costa, a math teacher here. Teresa Baird, yeah, who is a grade five sped teacher. Let me back up for a second. Jean's a sped teacher, and Sharon is a nurse. Alan Brayley is leaving the middle of July. He's our maintenance guy that takes care of all our fields. I'm not quite sure how we're going to do that. We'll probably need, no disrespect, Mr. Colly, we'll probably need about 20 people to replace him with what he does. Tracy Olivero, we all know from Director of Teacher and Learning, is leaving in October.
September, right at the beginning of September.
Right at the beginning. Margaret Collins, who's a sped teacher at Cushman School, is going out in October, as is Monica O'Malley-Tavaz, who's a math and science teacher at the middle school. And of course, Mr. Doan, Darren Doan, who's the principal at the middle school, and he's leaving the middle of March. So, a lot of personnel, a lot of experience, and we wish them nothing but the best.
That's right.
Enjoy your long, happy retirement. The only other thing I've got, I know Nanya talked about it a little bit, but my congratulations to the graduating class. Had an opportunity to go to the prom, and then the after-prom. There were over 300 students at the after-prom. Really had a grand time. They had a carnival-type of theme, plenty of food, plenty of entertainment. Frank Santos, the hypnotist, was wonderful, as always. Scholarship night to see all the students and the local businesses and organizations that step up to the plate and help our students out, you know, wish them all, wish them all well. And Dr. Jenkins, Ms. Waite, congratulations on your children graduating, type of deal. Wish them well. And just, and again, she mentioned that, but, you know, our teams, all our sports teams are in tournaments, so some are continuing, some unfortunately had some tough luck last week, but congratulations to all of them for making it. So, that's all I have. Anybody have anything? Mary?
Yeah, actually, I don't know, you serve Chris over there, but I do want to make sure that, you know, we do revisit the security, just respond to parents. I think, you know, we have a lot of questions around just our, you know, physical buildings, you know, so if we kind of hit that in the future, if it's not on, you know, this one, just, I know the letters she sent out.
Dr. Jenkins has been, Dr. Jenkins, I apologize. Dr. Gifford has-
She can do it if she wants.
Dr. Gifford, I was looking at Dr. Jenkins, I apologize. Dr. Gifford has been responding to those. I mean, the letters have gone out, so it's, you know, she's on top of that, I know.
And I guess I just also want to say, and this is kind of, like, ties back into what, you know, Dr. Jenkins was mentioning earlier, as we, you know, think about this, and it was a terrible, you know, obviously, it's a terrible day, terrible thing, but, and it's horrible. I think as we think through, and I thought Mr. Galishaw was so eloquent, and, you know, in looking back, yes, Mr. Galishaw, I'm looking at you, like, and looking back at our, like, you know, how our children, like, process through technology, and Dr. Jenkins, the warning signs were there. I also think we want to caution that, you know, we can make our schools into fortresses, but it occurs to me, like, more and more, that our children then playing on Saturdays at DYSA, you know, and they're completely, you know, at Crapo, you know, we're in the groceries with churches. So, we have to be really thoughtful about how we, you know, proceed, because, you know, we can't put kevlar our best on our children, our toddlers running around. And I think, again, we have to be, you know, we have to make sure our teachers receive the training, and I know some protocols are, you know, now, I think in the fall, we're all aware of that, and that needs to happen, and have the right conversations for these kids. But, you know, again, we have to be very aware of all of our spaces around the town, that it's not just our classrooms, you know, that, you know, we can't put barbed wire around DYSA. I mean, there's just certain reasonable things, I think, steps that we have to take as, you know, and to make sure the mental health and, you know, everything. And I also just want to say, I thought that, you know, we talk about mental health and all children and inclusivity. I thought that Ms. Lassie's speech at the commencement program was just beautiful and outstanding, and just so loving for, I felt like every child that left that speech felt seen by her. And I even saw, like, a boy hold up a heart as he wa-
Yeah.
I just, you know, I think it speaks volumes about so many of the beautiful teachers and staff that we have, that really, they see our kids from the day that they come in, in, you know, preschool, and they're, you know, there's so much love that follows these kids, you know. They're our students, even if they're no longer in our particular school. So, I just thought that was beautiful. So, that's how I'll end on that.
Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, you know, echoing some of Mrs. Waite's comments, I think one of the things that would be really nice that this committee could do, and show, you know, show the thoughtfulness of our educators and of our staff, some of which have worked 30-plus years, you know, it's wonderful that we acknowledge them, right? You know, at our school committee meeting. Would be, you know, even more wonderful if we invited them, you know, whether it's a school committee meeting, you know, maybe we have it in the auditorium, where I just think it's a good opportunity, and it shows a level of respect and a level of, you know, of care, that what the Town of Dartmouth, and what the Dartmouth Public Schools is all about, and valuing our staff, and valuing our educators, and our faculty as well. So, I'd love to see something, you know, it doesn't have to be this year. It could, but I'd love to see something that we start, some kind of official recognition of our retirees from the school committee, you know, and it can be a small token of appreciation, and just recognizing them. Maybe, you know how we do our new staff at the beginning of the year, we read the short little bios about them. Maybe we have a short little bio done up about our retirees and how they've spent their careers here.
I love that.
So, you know, I'd love to see something like that formed.
That's what I think.
Good idea. Okay. Anything else? All right. Our next meeting is going to be here on Monday, June 27th, 2022, starting at 5:00 PM. With that, the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose- a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of negotiations with non-union personnel only. Union is not included tonight, just non-union personnel, and not return to open session. So moved.
Second.
By Mr. Oliver, second by Ms. Waite on the motion. Any discussion? Chair, hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Gunther.
John News?
Yes.
Mary Waite?
Yes.
Kathleen Emerald?
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins?
Yes.
Or Solomon?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening. Be safe.
Thank you, Mr. News.